Any kind of activity there?
They fell asleep.
What were they doing?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Chris.
Did you buy a new car?
At the end. Sorry, anyway, because it's like, well, I was gonna, you know, every day, the last number day, they're gonna call you.
We see the agenda and the attachments, and we'll do the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number three on the agenda, comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. This is the board's business meeting, so this is the only time that audience members can speak on topics that are either on the agenda or items for future consideration. So if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak, feel free. You have to come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name is John Walton. I'm a resident of the district. I live at 522, 5225, South 110th Street. I'm particularly concerned about the review that you're doing on the elastic policies. And we read the review that you're proposing. I think they're excellent. There's two areas that I suggest that you might take a look at. Number one is spelling out more clearly what the penalties are for different things. And then the second point is at the final paragraph, it talks about it being taken care of and done annually. And I suggest that in order for this kind of a policy to really take hold, to become part of the culture, it has to be reviewed more than once. It has to be reviewed again and again and again, and it has to be done in the classrooms, and it has to be done on a broader session. Those are the comments that I have on the policy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Pumburnett, 12255 West Black Oak Drive. I'm here to talk about the calendar for 2012 and '13. I've talked to Nancy about this. I, it's my opinion that we violated Wisconsin Open Meeting laws, specifically item C on page 13, the action agenda items. It speaks of that the information in the notice must be sufficient to alert the public to the importance of the meeting so that they can make an informed decision whether to attend. The decision thus signals that in some circumstances, a failure to express these state whether action will be taken at a meeting could be a violation of the open meeting law. Although the courts have not articulated a specific standard to apply to this question, it appears to follow from Bushwell that the test would be whether, under the particular factual circumstances of the case, the notice reasonably alerts the public to the importance of the meeting. The first meeting in December, it was the action item on your agenda. It was not on the action item on either of the agendas in January. We brought in two votes. After the vote was taken, we sent all of the email on infinite campus saying, this is what we voted on, and this is what it's gonna be. There was another email that came out after that, trying to straighten out some of the confusion as to what the people and parents were thinking and hearing. If it was that important to send out two emails using infinite campus after, why didn't we do it before? Why didn't we tell everybody before the vote what was going on? Is that important? We're dealing with not only our kids, our parents, our administrators, our teachers are all changing. It's all changing in the community. It's very important that we have that information to the parents. In the second email that went out, it stated that the high school had these type of listening lessons. I've talked to several high school parents, none of them had any knowledge of this going on. The middle school, it stated that the middle school had a teacher coffee and open forum. I was at that. It was not about this. It was about bullying. Stephanie and Suzette were also there. Ms. Dazler or Mr. Borden did not bring it up. It was brought up by a parent in the open forum part. It was very misleading that that was in there, as one of the forums that parents could talk about. It was also held at eight o'clock in the morning, when the people that are struggling to have this new calendar are at work and can't be there. The other issue I have.
Quinn, thank you. Your time is up, and we've heard what you've had to say, so.
How many minutes, extended minutes?
Three minutes, 10 seconds.
I represent a group of parents, so I make my five minutes. Thank you. Also, in your agenda, it says, please be aware that the Board of Education cannot discuss nor debate items not on the agenda. Well, also in Wisconsin open law, meaning open, open Wisconsin open meeting law, it states on page 16, under number four, citizen participation, although it is not required, this open meeting law does permit a government body to set a proportion of open meetings as a public commentary. Such a period must be included on the meeting notice. During such a period, the body may receive information from the public and may discuss any matter raised by the public. I would say you're, it's incorrect what you're stating on your agenda. How do we go about resolving this?
It's not on the agenda, we cannot discuss this.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments.
Krishlela, 4547, South 121st. I wanted to request to have the 2012-2013 calendar put back on the agenda so we can have some more debate about this, or some discussion.
Thank you.
Lisa Truer, 11920, West Coltspring. I am requesting to put the calendar back on the agenda. I don't believe there was enough communication to the parents. I want to make it clear that we are not against what the teachers are trying to do. We are all for the collaboration of the teachers to help our students. But the calendar itself, the timeframe, cannot be, in my opinion, the best timeframe. And I'm not sure any other options were even presented. And if they were, I don't know anything about them, because there was very little communication to the parents. I have children in all three schools, and the only school I heard from was the elementary school. Nothing from the high school, and the email less than 20 hours in advance to the coffee at the middle school. But I don't believe that this timeframe that you have put forth is conducive to our families. I've looked at the other school districts. While we're toasting, Greenford, Rutina, you guys mentioned, both of them have early release for all three schools. They don't have this late start, early release, which is very chaotic. We all, a lot of us, rely on our older children to watch the younger children in the afternoon. Now, I think you would, you know, meet a lot less resistance if this was one of the options. Again, we're not against the teachers getting together. We're all for that. We're all for communication between the teacher, but that's also what you're trying to prevent to the parents. The teachers are okay to communicate, but you're not communicating to us. And so I ask to put the calendar back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, number four on the agenda, we have the audited financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2011.
I give the official introduction.
Yes, please.
This is Carrie Gint from the auditing firm of Riley, Penner &amp; Benton, and they sent one of their big guns, because she's actually one of their partners, and has been very familiar with our district for quite some time. So Carrie, it's all yours.
Thank you for having me here. I have a summary of the audit report. I'll go through that with you. On the first page of the report is our opinion. I want to note that this year, we believe last year's meeting was actually qualified instead of unqualified. The reason for this is no one had interfered or acted through the opinion. Because we're unable to obtain an updated actuarial valuation of the post-employment benefits due to this, we are unable to properly calculate the crew liability for OPAT, which is included in the statements and described in note eight. The amounts that we're using are based on an outdated valuation, and so we're required by DPI to have a qualified opinion because of this. I also want to note there was a change to see our G54 of the new standard had to be implemented. Two main changes to notice because of this. In the past, you would have seen on the statements, one column for special education fund and a separate column for the general fund. Because of this, you had to combine those, and you'll only see one fund. They're both under the general fund now. In addition, there's some new fund balance classifications. The new ones are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So if you're trying to compare this year's statements to last year's statements, those are the main differences you're gonna find. The financial results for the year, the general fund ended with a net increase in fund balance of about $2.9 million. Fund balances, the general fund ended with a non-spendable fund balance of $255,000. This is due to the prepaid expenses. An equal portion has to be non-spendable to the prepaid expenses. There's also an amount assigned for self-insurance. This is $983,000. And then the unassigned fund balance is $9,690,000. In the capital projects, there was a fund balance at the end of the year of just about $8 million. Most of this is due to a $6.5 million bond issue, which was for the high school renovation. Those proceeds were still sitting in the fund balance at the end of the year, for the most part. For a budgetary comparison, again, the general fund and the special education fund were combined for this as well. And the two funds had 93% of its budgeted expenditure spent during the year, and about 102% of the budgeted revenues received during the year. Your debt activity for the year, the general obligation bonds, you paid down $690,000 to leave a balance at the end of the year of $1,325,000. General obligation notes, you added $6.5 million during the year, and that was your ending balance as well. Your qualified school construction bonds, there were no payments or additions during the year. The balance ended at $500,000. And your capital leases, you paid off $105,000 and added $390,000 for Apple computers. So the balance at the end of the year was $286,000. Subsequent to year end, related to the debt, you also approved to use $8.7 million of your fund balance to defeat some of the outstanding obligations, and funds are to be paid to a trust to provide for future debt service payments. The last couple pages of the audit report relate to the single audit or the A133 audit because of the federal and state funds that you received. We had two findings there that I would like to note. One is time and effort reporting. This is a federal requirement that was stressed by DPI this year, and was a finding for many of the districts that we audited. The requirement is that semi-annual certifications need to be furnished for single cost objective employees, and then multiple cost objective employees must have certifications furnished at least monthly. Our discussion with the business manager was that the business manager and the special education director have discussed the need for tracking, and a form is going to be used in future years to, to meet this requirement. The second finding was for unallowable costs. The cost of a Medicaid claim processing in the amount of $536 was charged to the IDEA grant. Medicaid administration is not an allowable cost for the IDEA program. We discussed with the business manager, in the future, he will review the claims before they are submitted to try and prevent future costs like this getting through. We also issue a letter to the board each year. I'll go through that with you quickly. On the first page, down towards the bottom, there's some terms we have to use. They changed a couple years ago. We have to call them significant deficiencies and material weaknesses now. The worst is the material weakness, the significant deficiency is lesser in severity. We had two deficiencies. Both of these are probably the same that you've seen for probably the last two years, if not a couple more. The first is preparation of the financial statements and footnote disclosures are prepared by us as auditors. This is very common among districts, but it does represent a deficiency in internal controls, and we're required to put it in there and tell you about it if we're the ones that are preparing the statements and the footnotes. The second one is that one or more audit adjustments were required to prevent the financial statements from being materially misstated. If you look at the last, I think, three pages of the letter, there's a copy of all the journal entries that we made, if you want to look through what they were. We recommend that management review these entries in order to determine if these types of adjustments could be made during the year as part of the ordinary financial reporting process, rather than us doing them at the end of the year, then that would get rid of this comment from the letter. On the second page, are, these are not deficiencies or weaknesses, they're just some items that we noted and wanted to bring to the attention of the board. First one, you've probably seen for many years. District operates its accounting and reporting with four individuals, which precludes a proper segregation of duties. This is very common with districts your size. They all see this comment too, and have for many years. Under these conditions, the most effective controls are management's knowledge and monitoring of matters related to the district's financial affairs. The next one, accounts payable reconciliations. We noted unexplained differences, differences, sorry, between the total of accounts payable detail is being provided to us and the total reported in the general ledger. Monthly reconciliations of accounts payable detail listings to the general ledgers should be performed to keep the two in balance and to identify any reasons for the differences so that they're easier to identify and easier to correct, if it's done from month to month instead of from year to year. The next one, food card reconciliations, is basically the same. During our audit, we noted food card balances are not being reconciled to the Fund 50 deferred revenue account. We suggest monthly reconciliations of the food card balances to what the general ledger is showing to keep the two in balance and identify any reasons for differences. Fixed asset recording. In prior years, the district had an appraisal company track their fixed assets, the additions, the disposals, and the depreciation. For the 2010-11 year, the district did not have an appraisal. If an appraisal is going to be used, they should be completed annually. If you determine not to have an appraisal done, you should implement policies and procedures for tracking the additions, the disposals, and the depreciation, so that when we come, it's there for us, and we don't have to try to recreate what happened. The next one, employee reimbursements. During the audit, we noted an employee approving their own reimbursements, even though there was adequate support documentation to support the reimbursement checks. We recommend that a member of management approve all employee reimbursements, and any reimbursements to the business manager should be approved by the superintendent. Adopting this policy will strengthen internal controls over your cash disbursements. We also noted an employee who received a reimbursement for tuition expenses that were in excess of the amount permitted in the contract. We recommend the district develop procedures to ensure that policies are enforced. I believe you might have already changed your policies on tuition, so that might be a mute point at this point. The next page, suspension and debarment policy. The district does not have a suspension and debarment policy. According to A133, a district is prohibited from using federal grant funds to purchase goods or services equal to or in excess of $25,000 from any party that is suspended or debarred from the federal government. The government provides a database containing parties that have been suspended or debarred. We have the website there that you can use. Recommend that district create and implement a policy to verify that any persons that are receiving this amount have not been suspended or debarred by the government. The next two, time and effort reporting and the allowable costs, those are the same as the single audit findings, so I won't go through those again. The grant claims. The district files the majority of the grant claims after year end. This does not provide for proper cash flow management, and it deters the district from reviewing the expenses related to the grant on a periodic basis. We recommend the district file their grant claims throughout the year in order to efficiently manage cash flows and related expenses. Also related to this, we noted several instances where expenses listed on the grant claim exceeded the approved amount. Grantees are not allowed to expend more money than approved per account classification, so even if in total, you're within what's been approved, if between the different categories or lines that they provide, you're over in one area, they don't allow that. Several instances where the district did not receive the full amount requested as a result of breaking the percent rule without approval. If you review it periodically and you see that you're gonna be over in one area, you can talk to them and get the overages allowed or work out some kind of amendment. So if you are doing your grants monthly or semi-monthly, or, you know, more periodically than every year, you would know that, and you can request and then end up getting your full amount of grants. Student activity account classifications. DPI has issued guidelines on what should be included as a student activity fund, and therefore in Fund 60, and what is a district activity account, and therefore should be in 10, 21, or 72. We suggest that the district review the activities it has in Fund 60 and see if any are more properly classified into one of the other funds. And then the one on page four, I actually went through this already a little bit, but the district was required to have a new actuarial report for post-employment benefits completed for fiscal year 2010. The district did not have the report completed in the timeframe required by the government auditing standards, and as a result, a qualified opinion was issued. District must have a new actuarial report for post-employment benefits completed for fiscal year 2012. Rest of this letter is standard wording. I'll go through that really quick, it's just things we have to make you aware of. One new accounting policy adopted during the year, GSB 54, which I told you about. Most sensitive estimates affecting the financial statements were the estimate of post-employment benefits based on the actuarial evaluation, and then an estimate of fixed asset lives, which is determined in cooperation with the district's appraisal company normally. We have attached a schedule of material statements that we detected that resulted in journal entries. No disagreements with management, no other consultations with other accounts we're aware of, and no other findings or issues to make you aware of. Any questions for me?
Yes, Carrie, I have one. In your experience with school districts our size, and given what changes have been occurring in Madison last year, how many districts would you say are delaying their ac-? actuarial study for OPEP?
I don't know for sure. I think if you do it now and then there's huge changes, it does require that if there's a significant change, you have it reevaluated. So if you would do it now and then in a couple of months, there's a big change, you may have to do it again. On the other hand, you have to weigh that with having the qualified opinion.
Right. I bring it up for both members of the board as well as the audience because if anybody has any experience in accounting and they see the word qualified opinion, once in a while, they get a little concerned about that. But we have a board, also have a responsibility to weigh the cost of multiple actuarial studies, which are not cheap. And to do one now and then only have something changed six months from now and incur that cost again would not be fiscally responsible on our part. I can tell you, the audience, that, and having experienced lending to school districts in my normal course of my job, this would not be something that we would find to be a deterrent to lending to districts, especially one with the financial condition that Whitnell is in. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the number five, the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have A, approval of boys volleyball cooperative agreement between Whitnell and Greenfield High School. B, accept the donation of tools from Milwaukee Electric Tool Corporation to Whitnell High School. C, accept the donation from the Edgerton PTO. D, approval of first reading of policy number 522.6 email archive and access and revised policy number 411.1 student harassment. E, approval of January 23, 2012, and February 13, 2012, school board minutes and January 23, 2012, and February 13, 2012, closed session minutes. And F, approval of February vouchers and vouchers payable. Would anyone want to pull an item off the consent agenda?
I do.
I do.
CJ?
I'm going to pull B and C. Are you going to pull D?
I'm going to pull D.
Okay. So I'm going to pull B and C.
I was going to pull A.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to pull E just to make it a hat trick.
Motion to approve E is presented.
Second? Second, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's start from the top. We'll start with the first and the second on that motion.
I put the motion forward.
Bill seconded. So let's start at the top. A.
I just wanted to make a...
Mr. Ellerton is in the audience if we have questions from him to ask.
My reason for pulling it was timing. Is there a deadline that we need to meet with Greenfield before, at which point after that, we can't do this? And if we have that time, then can we use it maybe to think, instead of waiting another year? Or is it beneficial for us to form the cooperative first, go with a cooperative volleyball boys program, and then try to form our own? That was my only comment. If there's no need to join Greenfield, they don't need to know that we're joining them until June, then why wouldn't we wait another two months and spend more time researching instead of voting on it now and having it done?
I would ask you, I would ask you, what, if we wait and they don't need to know until June, what do you propose and we do? Form our own team, not form a team, not join a co-op?
Because the sole reason I heard we're not forming a team is lack of interest. And if we had two months to go out there and really recruit volleyball players and boost the interest, then maybe that reason goes away and we start our own. And I don't know that either, so that was... But I did hear that that was the reason why we weren't forming our own boys volleyball program.
I don't remember it being the only reason why. I remember it being that it was also, this is a financial way to get into the program to start to see where we can sit and see if we can start drumming up business because we do have a group of kids that are active, that would like to participate. But the cost, the cost is the question I have for developing a full-blown boys volleyball team would be the question I have for Mr. Ellerton. I don't know if he has that information available tonight.
And my question would still stand that if we had the time to research the cost and that, we spend it that way. So is there a time limit? Is there a deadline?
The deadline in the WIA was in February, I think it was February 1st, it was early February. We asked for an extension and we do have an extension through the end of March.
All right, that's not, yeah, fine. Then I guess we wait a year. So it's, that's all I need to hear. I'm good with A.
The extension was till March to create our own volleyball?
No, to approve the co-op.
The co-op, okay. All right.
The time has passed to do our own program, but we did file with Greenfield an extension to approve a co-op.
And the cost for Whitnell is estimated to be?
In the memo that I had provided to the district for the school board, I did go through and broke down the cost. What I brought with me tonight is the expenditures for the volleyball program at Greenfield and how we arrived at the numbers that we arrived at.
Okay.
The Greenfield program has 19 athletes in it right now and typically you'd like to see your volleyball program have in the mid-30s for students. So they approached us about the idea of doing a co-op because they don't project their numbers to go up anytime soon. They had asked us to try to get 17 people interested in the program. That would bring their program numbers back up to where they were several years ago. And the cost of doing that, right now, the total cost of the program in Greenfield is $9,755. That's what it costs the district minus whatever the students pay in Greenfield as a co-curricular fee. That number at 19 kids to the Greenfield School District means they have to pay $513.42 a kid. The 17 kids from Whitnell would be added to that. Actually, the number's up to 25 now. But that doesn't mean 25 kids would be members of the Greenfield co-op. If it were 17, which is what they originally requested, it would take us up to 36 total kids. So the cost per athlete would be divided, instead of 19, would be divided by 36 kids. So I don't remember my exact number, but the expense to the district would be $200 and some dollars per Whitnell kid. But we would also be paying, each athlete would be paying their $100 co-curricular fee to the district. So my rough estimate to you guys would be, in a co-op, somewhere around $2,000 expense to the district.
So I'm going to ask you, just doing the math real quick. 19 students at Greenfield, the rest would come from us. You're saying we had 17 kids from us. If I do base on the 17 kids, it comes out to $270 per child on the $9,755. $170 net after $100 student fee times the 17, the district cost would be $2890. Does that sound about right?
That looks like what I have here.
About just around $3,000.
Right. I shouldn't have said less than $2,000.
That's fine. That's, I just wanted to make sure it was correct.
I knew that I had the numbers, I just didn't bring them with me. I apologize. I brought a different sheet that was kind of the bulk of the information that I had from Greenfield and I didn't break the numbers down like the number was broken down. I apologize. So for us, to answer actually a couple of questions together here, in my opinion, just from the athletics point of view, I don't think that it would be reasonable for us at this time to commit to our own program not knowing whether we'll have consistent numbers of kids. At least in a co-op, we will consistently have a program with Greenfield that won't be a huge expense to the district. We can investigate ways to bring boys volleyball to the middle school, but once you do your own program, the way to do it is to have a feeder program like your middle school. Right now, there are, there are club programs for boys out there. A lot of that expense falls to the district. If you take it to your middle schools, which will lead to your high school, which will lead to your own program, you have to remember you're going to be paying for a seventh grade coach, you'll be paying for an eighth grade coach, you have to add in uniform costs for seventh and eighth grade teams, equipment. Same thing over here. You have your coaches that you have to pay for, you have your uniforms that you have to pay for. We would be looking at more than the $10,000 number that Greenfield has. The $10,000 from Greenfield is just their high school program number. I don't think we should do our own program with just the high school yet. I think we should consider what it would mean to develop a middle school program and get our kids into the high school. If you want to have a successful program, I think you got to have, you got to have that model where they're not just starting for the first time when they get to high school. I think that's, I think we kind of, you know, set our kids back a little bit when they first experience in something is when they first get to high school and we're asking them to do that. So that's why I feel a co-op is a really nice option for us right now. It's not very expensive. It allows us to kind of experience the boys volleyball program and it allows us...
To see what kind of numbers we have over a two-, three-year period. It also allows us to start thinking about a program at the middle school and budgeting for that stuff.
Okay, any other questions?
Thanks.
I'd like to put a motion forward. How do I want to phrase this exactly? I know we're all about exactness. Put a motion forward to the Whitnell High School entering into a cooperative of WIA, Boys Volleyball Team with Greenfield High School for the 2012-13 school year.
Second?
Okay. Now, you have further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, great. Volleyball.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. B, was that you teaching?
It is. I'll take B and C simultaneously.
Okay.
It would be rude if we didn't isolate and talk and say, just say thank you to Milwaukee Electric Tool and to the Edgerton PTO. With that, I put a motion to accept both donations and for B and C.
Second?
Thank you. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. And that leads us to D. Suzette?
Yes. We have two policies today to be approved for first reading, and that's the email archive access and the student harassment. I would like to table these two until the next meeting because we have a board member who has some input into the email policy that we want to look at. And then we just received today from our attorney a new paragraph on cyberbullying and I just got it when I sat down. So we need to look at that and I need to, we need to talk to Tom. So my point being that we need to wait. So I would like to make a motion to table till the next meeting, the first, or whenever, it can go back on, the first reading of policy 522.6 email archive and access and revised policy 411.1 student harassment.
Second?
All right, any discussion on that?
We talked about it before. It's going to come up for a second reading. So almost a moot point, it's fine. I'm all for tabling it. Just gives us another opportunity to look at them one more time before they come a fixed part of the policy.
Okay, and I would just ask that you take Mr. Walton's comments into consideration when you're looking at revising.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling these policies, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right. Which leads us to F. Mr. Shaw.
About five or six items in the payables I had vouchers payable I had questions on, but Doug's not here. So I don't know, if you might be able to answer some of these, I'll team up with you.
I probably won't be able to, but I will get you the answers. They're back Wednesday. They're at a funding conference.
Why don't I send an email to you on those items that I have questions on?
That'd be great.
Specifically.
I would have a question for your board. Is there anything that I would perclude you from approving the vouchers or you just want more clarification?
I would, what I could do is I could pull these items if you wanted to. Couple of them are kind of big, that's why. And one in particular, did we buy a new John Deere tractor for like $20,000?
I know it was in the, I know it was in his budget at the beginning of the year. It was in the budget last year and carried over to this year.
Okay.
That he actually sent it in, I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay. There was a tuition reimbursement also for $5,500. It might be a series of them. It's all, and acronyms always confuse me. It's for DVODTC. Can anybody tell me what DVODTC stands for?
I'd have to make it.
So, and then the city of Greenfield, we had some refunded taxes from 2010 and 2009. I bring this up because in '09, our rescinded or refunded taxes was like $725. And in 2010, from the city of Greenfield, it was $19,000. And certainly that variance or difference is rather substantial. I was curious as to, you know, what this represents, what kind of taxes these are. And lastly I had was a magazine drive. I'm assuming there's a revenue offset to this, I'm not sure, for $9,387. That's a heck of a lot of magazines in my book, but, so those are my main questions. I will make a motion to...
May I ask you a question, Bernie?
Go right ahead.
Are those in the vouchers or voucher payable?
Vouchers payable.
Okay, so they would be set up to be paid this week?
Correct, right.
Okay. So do you want to, that's to be held off until the following week, until we get clarification?
I shouldn't say. It looks like we might have paid these. It says voucher check date, January 19th and some, so it appears that we paid these already.
Well, just on a procedural question, I mean, perhaps to be addressed by the finance committee in the near term. When we receive this report, I think typically this has been a report of, most of what we see in these reports are things that actually represent action that's already been taken.
Right.
So this is essentially a pro forma. While I think it's, you know, important to be able to raise questions and to check back on what we're doing here, I do also think that if at some point one of the things we're going to do is make this process a useful process, we need to start to consider how we actually get the listing of vouchers to be paid before they're paid. So I, because I think Bernie's questions are legit, but I mean, if checks are already out, there's also a sense in which I don't think we're going to go back and reclaim a whole lot of those items. But anyway, it's sort of a, it's sort of a side question, but it is an ongoing issue that I think is worth, you know, considering as part of what we do with our financial picture generally.
I would, I would agree with that, Bill. It's some dollar amount, you know, I'm fine with looking at historically, but at some other dollar amount, I want to look at it on a go-forward basis.
Perspective basis, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers payable for February with the proviso that we get clarification as to what these items were for.
Do you have the items, Joe?
No, but I...
I'll send you an email.
Okay.
And then you need it back to the board or do you want to table it to the next? I'll second that motion, so we can have discussion. Okay.
Then my recommendation is respond with the answer to the entire board so the entire board sees what the question is and what Doug's response is. That way everybody's got on the same plane, Phil.
These get paid once a month?
Mm-hmm.
Once a month?
So?
And when?
Do you flip?
I mean, is this something that could go to the finance committee before it comes? I mean, is this something that could go to the finance committee before it comes to the board?
Well, that's what my, they're not just, they're not just cut once a month, they're on a regular basis, but they're compiled monthly for a report.
For a report.
Okay.
So what my, what I was going to do, Nancy, is I was going to have Lo and Joan keep a note. Bill's point is valid, so for the next finance meeting, let's put on our discussion regarding vouchers, vouchers payable. The only question we have is we don't know when the next finance meeting is going to be.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
It's the third Monday in March.
March. Oh, we already, okay. Unless something else comes up.
But one of the issues with this was if you don't pay them within, is it 30 days, you get hit with a penalty. So then you add up the penalties.
Well, you still want to be able to take the discounts where there's discounts to be taken and so you don't want to hold it up for that. But, you know, that'd be a good conversation to have at the finance committee. All right, so we have a motion on the table and any other discussion on that?
Well, I, yeah, I kind of do because point of clarity, I just need to understand Bernie's motion that I seconded was to approve all this.
Right.
With the exception of the items that he's listed that he'll send Joan a list to.
No.
He didn't?
No.
Okay.
My motion was to approve the February vouchers as presented.
Vouchers and vouchers payable?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get vouchers and vouchers payable?
And have his questions answered after the fact.
Right.
Okay.
You got it, Kevin, vouchers, now it's vouchers, vouchers payable. That's what I understood. Is that what you understood?
To approve the vouchers and vouchers payable.
February vouchers and vouchers payable.
Okay. Without any exception.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the February vouchers and vouchers payable, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, that motion is carried. All right. Number six, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration.
Yes.
I have one. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah? I'd like to have the 2012-2013 calendar put back on the agenda. At the time that it's put back on the agenda, I'd be prepared to present an amendment to the original motion to approve the 2012-2013 calendar. And of course, the amendment will be up for discussion in passenger, not passenger.
Okay. All right, TJ?
I'd like to have the feasibility put on the next, on the board.
What did you say?
The feasibility.
Has that already been discussed in the, in the finance committee?
It will be, but it has been and, but it was just back to our conversation I had the other day. It's, we need to have it here in the boardroom.
Okay. All right. Any other items?
I had previously asked about the, oh, that was in, I'm sorry, building's finance. Ask a different committee.
Okay. Nothing else? All right. Number seven, board member announcements.
I have one.
Yes?
I had the, I had the, it was actually a luxury of privilege to sit with one of our new representatives that, with the redistrict that has gone on in the state of Wisconsin. I guess my recommendation, the reason I'm asking, bringing it up is for the policy committee because that's where it's always come from, is we have two new, we used to have Jeff Stone as a representative here in Greenfield and covered the Whitnell School District. He is no longer, his district has been redistricted. We now have two different legislative assemblies. Mike Kuglich and Dave, oh my God, Dave, I met with Kuglich the other day. Dave Craig. Mike Kuglich covers the areas that include Hills Corners, excuse me, Hills Corners Elementary And so I just think we should bring them in here and have a workshop or a discussion with them about our issues to get them up to speed as to where we sit. So that was my announcement.
Okay.
Are you going to take the lead in making those arrangements?
I was going to leave that to the policy committee and if they want names and numbers, I can get them for them.
Good luck finding a date.
Well, yes. But like I said, it's not something that has to be pressed today. It's just, they're a new assembly.
And I just want to remind everyone that March 17th is the Booster Club fundraiser at the new Greenfield Community Center. And also on Wednesday, March 28th, that is our annual dinner for our senior citizens and they have the opportunity to see the musical that night, the dress rehearsal. The musical this year is the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. We saw a little snippet of that at the last meeting. So that is Wednesday, March 28th. Dinner starts at 5:30 and board members are usually asked to come and help serve. So would you please send Joan an email if you are able to attend and to do that?
Would you send out?
Wednesday, March 28th.
An email to us notifying what times you need people?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Other announcements?
What about the, isn't there a community-related fundraiser Wednesday night?
Correct.
For the family that suffered the fire? Was it right across Hills Corners?
Yeah. For the Allen family, there was a fundraiser tonight at Carabas that you had to buy tickets for in advance. And then on Wednesday, there's a, the Hills Corners Chamber is also having their social at Finn McGuire's from 5:00 to 7:00 and the fundraiser for the family is at that time as well. So...
Associated Bank is accepting donations also.
And Associated Bank is accepting donations in their name. So if anybody's interested in further details, I welcome anybody to ask me personally or send me an email and I'd be happy to fill you in because it's a great reason to show up on Wednesday at Finn McGuire's.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Thank you.
No. Who did the first one?